Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order committee behold for Tuesday, November ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Let the record show that all Alderman are present except for Alderman Gonzalez, who is excused. The only thing we have tonight on our agenda is a presentation from the Twin Tier Disc Golf Club on a proposal for a youth board course at Franchot Park. So before I invite the Twin Tier Disc Golf Club to present to the county council, I'd like to turn it over to Chris Shuary, the park and rec program coordinator, for an introduction. So, Chris?
Thank you, Alderman Crawford. It's a real pleasure to be here this evening with all of you. We have some really great news to report on our first season of the new Disc Golf Club course at Gargoyle Park. So basically, we just want to give everybody an update on where we've been. And I would just like to say on behalf of the department, what a pleasure it's been to work with these folks. They've met what we said, and they said what they've met. And even beyond that, they put in several hundred hours of volunteer work down there to get this up and running in less than one year. This proposal was first brought to Mary Alio and myself, I believe, November seventeenth of last year. So we are less than one year. And I'm happy to report, and I'll let Rich elaborate a little bit more on this, that as of Sunday, all thirty-six teapad boxes will get completed. So we are substantially complete down there. There's some minor landscaping work to do, maybe in the next couple of weeks or come springtime. We've also had our first tournament down there that was held in early October, and I believe we had between seventy-five and eighty players at that tournament, some from as far away as Ohio. So again, we're going to start seeing that, people coming to our community, eating in our restaurants, buying our gas, going to our shopping areas. So it's nothing but a positive. And next year and many years thereafter, I see this continuing to grow. I think it's going to be a great trend. Again, and for, you know, the former public works employee in me looks at it as, you know, there's very little maintenance, upkeep that's required, so it's relatively easy on our crews. And again, it's nothing but a positive thing. That park needed a new purpose, and this gives it that. And I think along with the Disc Golf Course, we can market that to more groups. We've seen a small increase. Hopefully, next year when we're past COVID, we can even market it further for different company activities and such down there. So again, I'm going to go by one of my values is always listen more than you speak. So I'm going to turn this over to Vizari with Alderman Crawford, to Richard Longer, president of the Twin Tier Disc Golf Club.
Well, I could learn from that, Chris. So what did you say, listen more than you speak? I should take that. I like that. All right. Yeah, at this time, I would invite Rich to approach the podium and give us a rundown. We're all ears.
Thank you, John.
If you need to raise that flag, go ahead and raise it, Rich. I don't know. I think there's a way to do that.
I guess. There we go. Nice to meet all you in person from last year. It's been about a year. And Chris said it all. I echo everything Chris Shuary said. It's, the course is getting used. And thanks to the city working with us and all the volunteers, we were able to get all the baskets and two sets of teapads for each tee done this year. Every time we're out there, there's always families playing. You see Amish families, people from out of town, traveling, just stopping on the way. So it's been a great, great thing for the public. One of the things we noticed when we were trying to get youth involved, we did four or five youth clinics. Part of that was with, Chris is going to got some extra materials from those youth clinics. We surveyed kids between four and thirteen years old. After they did the youth clinic, only forty percent of the kids had ever heard of Disc Golf before, but pretty much all of them had a blast, and most of them would play, would play again. So having a youth course that would cater to younger ages under the age of ten, where kids are only throwing a hundred feet, where gargoyle baskets are anywhere from two hundred, three hundred, four hundred feet, would, would help serve even a wider demographic in areas that need it. So having that idea, I, you know, people in the Disc Golf Club knew about it. I'm going to turn it over to Dave, because the Franchot Park idea was his.
Good evening. Thanks, Rich. Just real quick, we've been talking about a suitable spot for a youth Disc Golf course. And I've worked in the area for twenty-five years, lived here for twenty-five years. So I said, well, while I'm traveling, I'll, you know, think about it and see, see what I can come up with. And just shortly after doing that, there was an article in the Nolian Times Herald that you guys wanted to enhance Franchot Park. So I drove down, I took a look, and I thought, this is the perfect spot. It's already got a lot going on for youth. And I said that to Rich, and he sent me back a, a computer aided design for six holes already. So he'd been thinking about it for a little while. And his biggest concern was that the east side of the park, we can get about six holes. On the west side is much more open. And I hate to admit this as a diehard Disc golfer, but for it to be fun, you need trees. And so with that in mind, there's a memorial garden down there, children's memorial garden. And I know that. I've lost it, a son, infant son. And I've also worked on maintaining that a bit down there. The idea that I came up with, and I pitched back to Rich, was let's build on that and put in, I'd say about six trees for those other three holes on the, on the west side without detracting from the park, but just enhancing. We're not looking to, you know, take anything away from it. So looking at that, we figured like two, two holes per tree, two trees per hole, excuse me. One about midway down the fairway and one closer to the basket to, you know, make it somewhat challenging for, for the kids. And I pitched that back to, to Rich, and he really loved it. And he said, would you spearhead the project? And so here I am. And so we're looking at trying to get six parents of kids that have passed to, to donate, to do a little plaque underneath the trees. It's like a landscaping paver is, is what it is. And for those that are in the parks department, we're looking to keep the maintenance very simple on that. Put the paver underneath the tree in, in mulch and do it on like a diamond. So when you go to mow it, you can go right up to it. You don't have to circle around it and mess around with it. And just, we'd be able to freshen up the mulch every spring and, you know, reset that, that actual paver is, you know, movable. So you can take it out, redo it, put it back in. It's done. So thank you for your time. And I appreciate you listening. And Chris and the mayor, I appreciate you inviting us to make the presentation this evening for the project. That'll get us up to a nine-hole course. You know, obviously, I think there's a need, and we found a nice spot to fulfill that need. And I've worked with these fellows, and we put in, I don't know, over six hundred hours. I think I'm getting gargoyle ready. And we can do it, and we will do it if we have your blessing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anybody else like to speak? Do you have a couple other members? Eric?
It's just us two tonight.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, so at this time, I would open it up for comment or question from the Alderman.
Thank you. I can attest to how much fun it is, because I've been there many times. And our kids grew up playing Disc Golf in Vermont. We go on summer vacations. And I just want to thank you guys, because there's so many people that never played Disc Golf before, and they love it. So I think you are going to get this year. And Rich, you had talked about people staying in a new hotel when you have your tournament. That's another plus for the city. So I just want to encourage you to keep going. And, you know, if you do a fundraiser, please let us know. Okay? And thank you for everything. He taught me how to put the bricks in for the, so I try.
Over there. And one thing to add to that is if you do have questions to move forward, and you have a fundraising, if you can't, I have a skids or other rentals.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the council?
John, I'll just, I might do sense. I like to see good things happening. It's good for the city. You know, we got things like the scooters and that to give everybody the full inches to enjoy life a little more. It's good that we do that.
Yeah, thank you, Alderman.
Yeah, please. Thought of with the franchise and centrality of the location.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was going to say. So you absolutely, you nailed it right there. You know, I, I love the position that I'm in, because, you know, as everyone's gotten used to, I come up with lots of ideas, right? But sometimes, coming to, those ideas coming to fruition is a different story. About three years ago, two, three years ago, we were down working with Bonn Response, repainting the gargoyle pavilion. And I saw just some random guys out there throwing frisbees around, hitting trees. And I went and I said, well, what are you guys doing? This, this looks very interesting. It looked like they were having a good time. They said, well, we're playing Disc Golf. They said, man, this would really make a good use of space here, right? I said, man, that's a great idea. You know, so I brought that idea. I presented it, but it didn't take off, right? Because it didn't have doers. It didn't have, I mean, it indicated the blood, sweat, and tears that you put into it. And I've never met anyone quite like Rich. I wish, we have a lot of really good volunteers in our community, but the time and effort under Rich's leadership, he's like a dog with a bone. And, and under Chris's guidance, I mean, to watch you guys present the idea to us a year ago, you had a concept. I mean, an idea is one thing, right? But to get, to have a vision, to know what needs to get done, then to get it done is incredible. So I want to thank you on behalf of the county council for reactivating Gargoyle Park. All right? Because as a, as a representative of taxpayers, the number one thing I want to see is if our tax money's going into taking care of a park, it's getting used for the right reasons, right? And so you're talking about reactivating Franchot Park, an unused space of that. And so I say, what do you need from us? Because I think the location of it is incredible. The Gargoyle Park is going to be phenomenal for more advanced players, for league play, for St. Bonaventure, for clubs, right? I know Rich is already talking where I work, Pit Bradford. He's already, he's, I mean, this phenomenal, just champion for this product of Olean. But here is something where I can walk over with my kids, right? It doesn't just have to be for small kids. It could be for families, right? It's within walking distance of, of much of our, our communities, many of our communities. So what do you need from us? Is the question. You're talking about doing some fundraising. I know you did some fundraising. Did we, did the city council commit funding to Gargoyle Park previously?
Yes, city council.
Was it five thousand dollars?
We did it to that original match in four to five hundred that we talked about, yeah.
I would be, I would be all on board with having some sort of similar agreement in place. Okay? Where if you could come up with a certain amount of fundraising, the city council would be willing to match that. Whatever that magic number is, or then you said about, is it six holes here or six?
Six, nine holes. It's much less expensive than the full, or what I'm having to do, pay for teapads and.
Okay. All right. So I think, I think all of us would support a fifty-fifty match again. If you guys can figure out, come up with some plans, give us kind of an outline of what that looks like. And come budget time, I'm sure we can, we can work that into the budget.
We had estimated about six thousand dollars for the total project.
Okay.
So if we can raise three thousand, I don't think I'd, I'd be fantastic.
Chris, what do you think?
Yeah, I like the idea. I mean, I've worked, you've worked good the first time. And like you said, we got a community that's great, jumps on board. I don't see it being an issue.
Okay. Bob, as keeper of, as parks are under your domain, any, any concerns, any thoughts?
No, I'm definitely for it. I'm fit in with the master plan of the park. Just kind of got, announced my ideas at the entrance. We got to get the drag race context down there. And this is a really good start, so.
Alderman.
Yeah, I just want to ask Rich, does that include the trees? Were you talking about putting some trees in? That doesn't include them?
No, that was going to be, we're trying to fund that part through the mayor.
Okay. But if you come up short, you should let us know.
But that's a really, I mean, that's an additional touching. I mean, that's a really, that's a great, great idea, you know, to, to, to find parents that, that want to, you know, commemorate their, their lost, a lost child and donate the tree. And then kind of, you know, that, that hole, if you will, is.
Important, Chris.
Yes. I mean, awesome idea, great concept, no concerns here. Anybody else? I, just let us know what you need. Between Rich and Chris, just let us know what you need.
I think fundraising will be even easier. In fact, some of the fundraisers that I was in contact with during January, February of last year, like one of them forgot about it. And some of us has actually focused therapy, physical therapy, Olean. He said, allowed patients to Disc Golfers, and he's like, nice little sponsor of course. I said, well, we could use another part of that challenge, number six. So there's definitely, I think it's going to be even more momentum than before.
Awesome. Great. All right. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen, for all your efforts. And please continue bringing forward that, that effort for our sake. I mean, it's, now we just got to figure out how to get Rich to move to Olean.
I'm only two minutes from the border, so.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Anything else? Okay, I see nothing. I'll need the motion to adjourn. Can I go second, please?
Second.
Second, Alderman Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. I'll call to order the regular meeting of the county council for Tuesday, November ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Will the clerk please call the attendance roll?
Alderman Witt?
Here.
Alderman Pence?
Here.
Alderman Bernouk?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman. Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
And also Parker.
Here. Please rise for the rotation.
Heavenly Father, we seek your help with our affairs tonight. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best use of our own. We all have diverse opinion in this group, yet we wish to mend our differences and reach agreement satisfactory to all. Please share a little wisdom with us to help us to the right by all concern in the sake. Thank you for your heavenly blessing, Amen.
Heavenly Father, we have a sacred memory. It's a reward for which it seems one nation, one God, and the visible, whatever it is that we're all proud of.
Breeing, correcting approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting?
The regular meeting of the only incoming council was held on October fifty-six, twenty twenty-one at six forty-five PM. Present, Alderman Parker, Alderman Whit, Alderman Pence, Alderman Gonzalez, Alderman Bernouk, Alderman Robinson, and Alderman Anastasia.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting. Can I get a second, please?
Sure.
Second, Alderman Anastasia, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Committee reports, unfinished, council business?
We have none.
Communications from the mayor?
The annual organizational meeting in the state of the city will be held on Monday, January third, twenty twenty-two at six PM. Notice of retirement, Fred Saragens, City Auditor, effective December eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Also, Glenn Dajester, Auditor, Service, effective January third, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Misselings to communications?
We have none.
City official reports?
Monthly report of the City Auditor, month ended September twenty twenty-one.
All right, opposed legislation, who refers?
PL seventy-two dash twenty-one by Mayor Elio. Refer to regular meeting of Tuesday, November ninth, twenty twenty-one for resolution by Council President. PL seventy-three dash twenty-one by Alderman Bernouk. Refer to regular meeting Tuesday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one for resolution by Council President. PL seventy-four dash twenty-one by Mayor Elio. Refer to regular meeting Tuesday, November ninth, twenty twenty-one for resolution by Council President. PL seventy-five dash twenty-one by Mayor Elio. Refer to regular meeting Tuesday, November sixteen, twenty twenty-one for resolution by Council President.
Okay, so before going into public comment, thank you, Lenz. I'll offer an opportunity for any of the aldermen at this time to make a comment. Alderman Whit?
Thank you. I have two comments. One, I would just like to remind people, get your leads out on the streets. There's a lot of sidewalks that are totally covered and if really you have time to do it, I think our guys started this week on our second round. The other thing I wanted to comment on, this past weekend, we had a pumpkin shoot where an organization that helps supply clothing, boots, winter coats, mittens. It's called Operation Warm Hearts and it's for our local kids and parents that can't afford to get things and they waste only three, five hundred dollars. And it's just another example of how giving out community is. And I just want to thank everyone for showing up.
Thank you, Alderman Whit. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Alderman Pence?
I did want to, I think it's appropriate to congratulate Brad and Linda on their retirement and thank them for, for supporting us for all the years that they've been here. The only other thing I have to add is I'll be sitting out on the vote for voting though on the social media policy tonight, basically just as a, my belief is that whether we like what people have to say or not, I want to be able to say it. That's where I stand.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Pence. Anyone else? Alderman Robinson?
Yep, I wanted to, real brief, there was a judge that was removed from office in Alabama and it was because of things that he had said aloud in reference to the social media policy. Some of the things he did, he referenced African Americans as derogatory terms. He made biased assumptions that employee that he worked with that had a vehicle, it was a BMW or Mercedes, that he must have sold drugs. He used other racist language and undertones in public and he referred to George Floyd as a thug and he said he got me deserted. And none of these instances happened in courtroom, but his comments were being racially insensitive and they got him removed. And I know in this area, people tend to say a lot that it's their, it's their right to say whatever and, and things of that nature, but I think some people are confused. Some of the things that you think is your constitutional right, actually violate someone else's constitutional right. So I just want to make sure that people understand that. Tonight, I'll be voting yes on, on that policy, but I still think it needs some work. I do feel that it's something, as I always say, it's something that we can put in place and implement and we can always come back to it if we find that it, it needs more or if something needs to be amended, we can always go back and do that. But to continue with the overall policy that you had in place, I think we should go ahead and pass this forward.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Robinson. Anyone else? Clear? Yes? Alderman Anastasia?
Yeah, I'm not too sure what the, the policy entails. I mean, I've read it and it's been approved by our HR person. Have, have our attorneys also approved it?
Yes, both of them. The city attorney and our union attorney.
Okay. This is one of, I guess, the first amended rights of the employees and are not being violated. I guess I will support it for now, but I just wanted to make sure that they still have their freedoms, you know?
Of course.
You know, as chairman of the Diversity and inclusion committee, I think the committee did a very good job and I think, as I just told, Alderman Anastasia, it was reviewed by our HR person, our city attorney and the attorneys for the unions. To put it in place, we can't overstep what's in place as far as the unions, you know, we can't discipline someone more than what is in place. And I think, you know, the bottom line to me is if somebody says something that discriminates or hurts another person, it's that simple. You shouldn't be saying it. And I think, you know, all of us have the right to say what we think, but I think you also have to be sensitive to other people. And that might sound very elementary, but it's, it's just the fact of life. I mean, I would say something that I thought would hurt someone's feelings and do it maliciously or do it intentionally. And I just think, you know, that old saying, do unto others as you want them to do to you. It's the bottom line. So I think this is a good start and I agree with Alderman Robinson. If it comes to time, we have to add to it and so be it. So that's what I'm saying.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Whit. Anyone else? All right. And we will be coming to that then shortly. So at this time, I will open public comment. I will ask the clerk to please read the public comment statement.
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, further concerns, or to provide implicit testimony to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encouraging personal questions to contact them at their offices.
All right. At this time, I open public comment and invite anyone to approach the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Wendy Pilver. I live on Crown Street. Do you need my full address?
No.
Okay. Last month, this Board of Elected Officials passed Resolution eighty-two twenty-one to support the only in school districts and students and their rights as outlined in the only in city school district code of conduct. The passage of this resolution, despite seeming innocuous, is an attempt by this elected Board of Officials to use their office to pressure the only in school board into firing a school administrator for practicing his religious freedoms within the confines of his church. Your minutes show that you stated in the course of the discussion that, in the course of discussion, that members of this council believe that the individual should not be employed at the school. Immediately after the resolution was passed with only two dissenting votes, our First Amendment right to religious freedom means nothing if our local government uses the authority to condone punitive measures against those with religious beliefs who offend you. Since your action as elected official seems to indicate your lack of support for freedom of speech and since the common council has no qualms about weighing in on school board matters, there is another city, only in school city, sorry, another only in city school code of conduct controversy that I think this board should comment on. The only in high school has freely available a book that depicts two nine-year-old boys performing fellatio on each other for sexual, for sexual gratification. I have the book here with me today. It's called Long Boy. It's by Jonathan Avision. And if you would allow it, I'm going to read you a few quotes from the book.
No, I don't want that.
No?
No, if you'd like to talk to us and read us quotes, for whatever point you're trying to make, you can do that offline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I finish? I'm not going to, I'm not going to read any books.
Yes. Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah. This was brought up at the only in school board meeting and to date, nothing has been done about it. The book depicts pornographic sexual encounters between minors and is still, still freely available in the library. The only in school code of conduct prohibits students from, and I quote, "using electronic devices to distribute pictures or videos of sexually explicit images and can also refer to text messages of sexually charged, of a sexually charged nature." Yet the school has the book still in its library. I would like now to provide the common council with the opportunity to individually condone this book depicting nine-year-olds performing fellatio on each other for sexual gratification. Barring equal condemnation of this book, the citizens can only conclude that this council supports limitations for people's First Amendment rights for religious freedoms, but not for filth like this.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Mickey George, worth three. I just wanted to share some notes that I took about the current civilian review board proposal with a few red flags that I would like to draw attention to. In the six-page document, there are numerous and redundant mentions of the responsibilities and duties of the board in respect to working with OPD and the public. However, there are zero statements made to the effect that OPD members shall cooperate with the board or no member of OPD shall try and hinder the work of the board, et cetera. The proposal goes well out of its way to say OPD doesn't have to, and that's alarming. Think about it. A restricted review board can never have the same impact, excuse me, on the fragile police and community relationship as the officers themselves. Therefore, it should absolutely be required of them. In section, in section B, item one, you state that only after the chief makes their determination will they share the investigative evidence that would have the biggest impact on the recommendations made by the board to the chief to help make said decision, such as text, audio, video recordings, et cetera. This is completely backwards. It also prohibits the very important ability for the board and the chief to work together swiftly in the rare case where determination needs to be made decisively, like when a rotten apple needs to be removed from the barrel to save the rest from spoiling. Those moments, though rare, can serve to repair or further damage the relationship with police and community. You can't think like a city trying to protect itself from litigation on the CRB. You have to think from the perspective of the affected. Also, I think you may have missed the mark by how appointments should be made. I realize a number of you express resentment towards the idea of a board appointing or voting to remove its own members and that a resolution for a change to the charter would be too much work, but sadly, I need to remind you of who you'd be doing the work for. The people you serve in the community who have come together on about thirty different occasions to try and communicate to you that a higher standard is necessary. I propose to you here now to consider empowering the CRB to choose candidates for referral to the mayor, who would then consent with the council for final appointment approval. You've slated it in similarly in the way the board elects its president. I think changing this can give the people invested in the board a broader sense of autonomy. For the board doesn't have that basic independent identity. Think for a moment, who will actually want to volunteer their time to something that is basically just another extension of city government? It won't be the right type of people volunteering. You'll miss that diverse makeup the board seeks to maintain. Without such autonomy, you're wasting your time, quite frankly. Nobody's going to serve and you'll be back to square one. In section C, it says complaints go to, from OPD to the board, and I'm curious why it's not the other way around. Again, this is backwards. It should be common knowledge by now that people fear airing their complaints in public or directly to police because of the small-town effect. OPD and so many other police departments out there don't have a clear and established and independent route for airing grievances, so it should be paramount that people know that they can approach the board members in confidence. Nowhere in the proposal is it mentioned that the board members have the ability to take complaints from community members, and therefore, you're missing the mark by a mile. Which leads me to my last concern over avoiding ex parte communication. When a member of the public decides to come to the board member in a private conversation, I think it is natural and unavoidable that certain ex parte communication does happen. Again, it is not the duty of this board to protect the city from any resulting litigation should this process fail to prevent a bad apple from rotting the bunch, but rather to assure people that we are setting a higher standard in policing here in Atlanta. Because we have to. I'm sure you've seen the issues happening at the schools lately and in local churches, too. The culture here and in neighboring counties can, can sometimes be really, truly awful. Please keep this in mind as you continue to work on this, as there is still more to do, including getting OPD accredited. That's a pretty high standard to me, so I, I think that getting the CRB right and setting the bar high is only going to help in getting everybody accustomed to what's to come. I want to thank you for all the time and effort you put into this and I hope that you continue it and come up with something that people will want to volunteer their factor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Single and I'll call hold count of votes. On to finding some bills.
We got none.
And before we jump into resolutions, I want to make mention here that Director Ring came to me and we need to give our verbal authorization, the purchase of two city vehicles that need to be ordered, all right? We don't need to pay for it, but they need to be ordered by this Friday or, is that correct, Bob? Or else the deadline is going to be then in March. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll let Bob explain this in a little more detail as to what they are. Perhaps those on the fleet committee are aware of this already, it's been discussed, but we're going to have to give our verbal authorization. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Director, to Director Ring.
Thanks, John. So there's a lot to the story that, we've spoken about this a number of times in our fleet committee. What we're trying to do is replace the vehicle in water and sewer, our main utility vehicles that our crews use to go out onto a job site. So there are Ford F four-fifties. And if you've been following the market for vehicles right now, a lot of the plants are shutting down. DM has shut down some of their plants, Ford has shut down some of their plants. We purchased a lot of Ford vehicles. Our guys are training them more, they might go to us. The state bid prices are, are very reasonable. So Ford has given until Friday for this state bid to put in orders, or orders can't be taken until March. So these particular vehicles that we need to replace, one is a two thousand and twelve So these particular vehicles that we need to replace, one is a 2012, and the other is a 2010. So Brad Camp had spent some time in the fleet committee explaining how these vehicles, um, are costing us, um, a significant amount of money to maintain each year. We did some research on it, and the vehicles are to the point where it's costing us more to maintain them than it would in depreciation to own them as new. So at that point, um, effectively, it's, it's better for us to buy a new vehicle. It taxes our mechanic's division to continue to try and maintain these vehicles on a regular basis. It feels like every time I go down into the garage, one of these vehicles is in the shop with some kind of maintenance issue. So I guess what we're asking, um, is to be able to verbally approve ordering these two vehicles at this point, the Ford F-450s. There is about a eight to ten-month build out, so we still have to keep these vehicles that we own currently through the winter and through another summer. But if we wait, then we'll have to get them through another winter and summer and another winter. Plus, our expectation is that the cost is only gonna go up from here. Um, you know, there'll be another state bid at some point, but, you know, prices are only going up at this point. We've weighed other options like Enterprise Fleet. They gave us a quote that was about $3,000 or more. So we've, we've shot for the best price. Um, there's a real need, again, of one vehicle in water and one vehicle in sewer. Any questions at this point?
Where would we actually pay for these?
Upon, upon receiving the vehicle.
Which, I'm, I'm sorry if I missed that.
It's like ten months from now, the end of next summer, I would suspect.
So, I mean, just food for thought as far as, uh, the cost of these, again, is fifty thousand?
Yes, forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars per vehicle.
So just food for thought as we have this discussion here, um, my suggestion, when I talked to Bob about this, was usually we have contingency remaining in the water and sewer budgets, and seeing that one is a water vehicle, one is a sewer vehicle, perhaps we encumber fifty thousand dollars out of each contingency line item and set it into a capital account for when the, the bill comes due, perhaps is an option. Um, but I'm open to ideas, thoughts. Oliver Robinson?
I, I thought we just used, uh, water and sewer contingency for something recently.
We did, um, for the fuel bonds.
Okay.
We use water sewer. I can't remember where the amount of money came from, or it hasn't been a lot.
How much was that?
Seventy-five hundred each, if I remember right.
And we usually have seventy-five thousand in each of those accounts.
Correct.
So just food for thought. Oliver Witt?
Yeah, um, being a member of the fleet management, um, these vehicles, you can't even predict when they're gonna come in. The police vehicles we ordered last year still haven't arrived. So just because of COVID and the slowdown, um, with the chips or with the manufacturing, you know, I just think we better get in now rather than later. And we do have the money, and we have talked about this several times in fleet.
Just, um, they're at least a decade old each, correct? About, is it one like twelve years and one's ten years, or, yeah, twenty-twelve and two thousand nine?
Twenty-twelve, twenty-ten.
I don't know, but I guess I guess, two thousand, yes. Remind me again, but what is it? Two thousand twelve and two thousand ten?
Correct.
Okay. So, um, I think we've got, we certainly got our money's worth out of it. I mean, I think these are critical infrastructure systems that would need to keep up and running. I agree with Oliver Witt. Um, I would be in favor of, uh, giving you the authorization. Anyone else? Oliver, Anastasia?
Yeah, I have no problem making the purchase, but can I invest in this money be used towards these purchases that were given?
Hypothetically, I think it could be.
Yes, I mean, it's definitely something we can explore over the next, you know, eight months. Um, you know, as, as I'm sure you already presented to the fleet committee, um, we have other needs in, in fleet. We have other vehicles approaching, and so we may be talking about, um, you know, purchasing additional vehicles. We are also discussing, you know, green infrastructure and our plan, um, you know, for the transition to EV vehicles with the city. That's a conversation I have with Mark at our supervised meetings every month.
Okay.
But at least for now, we, we should, I think it'd be a good idea to get in line with these four fifty's.
All right.
Concerning for ten years, this kind of industry standard vehicles running in our environment every day, um, the price doesn't sound ridiculous for the kind of vehicles we're talking, so, uh, I would imagine they'll be considerably more expensive in another year.
Yep. I definitely agree. Okay, so, we all good? All in favor of that? Aye?
Aye.
All right, Bob?
Thank you.
Yep, you're good to go. Thank you. All right, uh, the clerk, please go on with the resolutions.
Resolution eighty-three dash twenty-one, PL seventy-one dash twenty-one by Alderman Wood, secreted by Alderman Gonzalez, to amend the city of all the court of audiences. Section twenty-four dash twenty-five, to prohibit parking on the north side of Washington Street at East corner with Water Avenue and at East corner with Winter's Avenue.
All right, this was discussed, uh, in committee. Any questions? Same number, the clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Pence?
Yes.
Alderman Bono?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries, um, six to zero. Resolution eighty-four dash twenty-one, PL fifty-two dash twenty-one by Alderman Wood, secreted by Alderman Gonzalez, to adapt the city of all the employees' social media apps.
Uh, this too, we've had numerous discussions on, um, just discussing this a little bit ago. So any final comments or questions? Oliver Witt?
Yes, um, I'd like to know, how soon will we upload the site so people can actually read it?
Sorry, there.
All right, I had it uploaded.
Okay.
Um, I had it uploaded.
I thought we had to vote on it first, but that's good. That's fine. I'm glad it's up. I just wondered, because a couple of people have asked me about it, and my thought is, as far as the municipality, it hasn't been updated to our new technology, and that was one of the purposes for doing it.
And just as a, as a housekeeping thing, so like I, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to do, um, if we have specific policies like this, um, I'm asking Tiffany at least twenty-four hours in advance per the new regulations, try to get into a habit of posting that, even if, and even if it's just a draft policy online, so it is available for the community to review.
Right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, and I wanna, I also wanna thank Oliver Witt, because I know she took a lot of time and effort, um, leading this, um, this social media, media policy. I mean, we came back to her and postponed her a number of times. We had questions, we wanted, uh, more to look at over, and, you know, good comments from our city attorney, so I wanna just commend Alderman Witt for the effort that she put into this. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, any other, uh, last comments or questions? Same number, the clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Pence?
No.
Alderman Bono?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Which carries five to one. Resolution eighty-five dash twenty-one, PL seventy-two dash twenty-one, that the common council, as we adjourned to include, that the proposed project for the city of all the water infrastructure, water filtration, which structural improvements is a type-two action, and that after a full review of the environmental assessment form determines that the project will have no adverse environmental impact and thus issue negative depression.
Okay, so, I want to give everyone an update on this, uh, this resolution as well as the, the next upcoming resolutions here. Um, we received a presentation about the, what's it called, WIA? The WIA grant for the water filtration plant, uh, last week, um, from Brad? Brad, Brad did it, right? Um, and so in order to apply for that, we have to pass these specific resolutions, okay? One is updating our seeker, uh, so this seeker was done in two thousand and twenty, but it needed to specify why it's a type-two action for our grant purposes. So this is essentially restating the seeker that was completed and now putting in verbiage that specifies as to why it's a type-two action. Bob is able to answer any questions pertaining to the, this, uh, this resolution or the next resolution, okay? Are there any questions on this? Bob, did I hit that? Have you, have you, anything else? Okay, do you guys have any questions? This is essentially, this is already passed, but it's just kind of, uh, pinning up some of the vote this year. All right? These grants are pretty specific. Okay? Uh, I'll entertain a motion. Motion is Alderman Witt. Alderman, second. Any questions? The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Pence?
Yes.
Alderman Bono?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Resolution eighty-six dash twenty-one, PL seventy-four dash twenty-one, to authorize the mayor to apply for quick funding through the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, EFC, Water Infra, Infrastructure Improvement Act, WIIA, for the water filtration plant structural improvements project, for the structural improvement to a wooden wall that is falling at the water filtration plant.
All right, uh, this is what we received the presentation on last week. Um, so the estimate is about one and a half million dollars, and if we receive this grant, it would cover about, um, roughly about two-thirds of it, so about a million, um, we would have a local share due of six hundred thousand. But obviously, this has been an ongoing, as soon, as long as I've been on council, this has been a high priority for our water filtration facility, and, um, yeah, so any questions? Comments? Same number, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion.
Alderman Anastasia, uh, second?
I'll second.
Second by Oliver Witt. Okay, any questions? Same number, the clerk, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Pence?
Yes.
Alderman Bono?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, now, this next resolution, um, is actually not going to, um, we've moved it to next Tuesday, all right? So the next resolution, um, that might be on your schedules, is going to be considered on November sixteenth, um, as it's required to apply for the WIA grant funding. This, uh, the way it's written here needs to be cleaned up. We, Bob, do you have any better way to say that? Uh, we need a formal bond resolution from Municipal Solutions? Is that what?
Yeah, well, I had a phone call with John Alessi, which is our bond counsel, and then, um, Municipal Solutions, who does most of the administrative busywork for it. They said we do need a formal bond resolution to apply for the grant. This is the third time that we've applied for WIA, and hopefully the third time that we get funding. In the past, we could do a generic resolution that authorized the auditor to go after a bond, but a lot of communities were doing that and then backing out of projects, so ESC strengthened their, you know, requirements for the application. So, um, hopefully that will make the grant a little less competitive, but it requires us to take this extra step, and we talked on Monday with John Alessi. He wasn't able to get the bond resolution prepared, in his words, um, uh, for today. Um, and I did ask him some questions, so it is a formal commitment to the funding, but it doesn't mean that we have to borrow other funds. So it can be rescinded, you know, if we don't get the grant. Um, it can be amended to, whether it be any amount that, that you'd like. If it's only for the grant funds, we can amend it to that, or if we wanna pay for the matching funds with stimulus funds, it can be amended to say that as well. So there's flexibility in it, just so you know.
So this is essentially the government saying, if we go to the lengths of approving your project and awarding you, you're kind of committed to doing the project. Yes?
Um.
How we fund it is on top, is on top.
Yes, that's correct.
Right?
I think that's pretty fair to say, if we get the grant, uh, I'm sure there's always a way out.
Yeah.
Um, because there's still financial agreement that you signed, or grant agreement that you signed with these agencies. That is bounded by law, um, or at least through a contract lawyer contract. Um, so there's always a way out, but this is a formal commitment to the project.
Yeah, that was one of the questions that I had with Bob, and Bob, you did a great job explaining that, you know, if we get awarded, are we committed to taking out a bond? And the response was, no, we could pay for it out of our surplus, we could pay for it out of our stimulus, um, you know, as an infrastructure project, or we could utilize the bond. So this is just essentially the additional hoop the New York State, uh, WIA people are making us jump through, um, to ensure that we're serious about going after this money. So, any questions for Bob? Any comments?
Well, this is for the wall to be repaired, the water plant.
Yeah, the south wall, um, we approved a designer board for the project. Um, we've been working on this at least for two years, I would think. Um, the wall is having some structural deterioration. Um, there are actually chunks of concrete that are starting to push out. On the other side of the wall, with, you know, you can stand in front of it and all the damage is kind of at eye level. Behind it is our filtration basins, so what we're gonna do as part of the project is basically cut out the entire wall, remove everything in our, the two basins that are there, the water filters that are gathering down through these basins, and we're gonna replace all the media that's in there. It's charcoal, it's like a charcoal material and a sand material, and, you know, filters the water, of course. Um, so they haven't been cleaned since, or they haven't, the, the media in there hasn't been replaced since the plant opened, and they're supposed to be replaced every fifteen years or a couple of years behind that. This grant pays for all that work, including fixing the wall plus the basin, so.
Yeah, so I mean, it sounds to me like we may have tried a number of times, but it's time to do it, no matter what.
Yeah.
Um, I guess the one thing I'd ask Bob is, uh, just hearing how the problem occurred, is that, you know, in the future, we make sure we have a way to hold people warranties here, you know, whether it's insurance, money, otherwise, but, um, that whoever's doing the work is gonna do it better than was done before.
Yeah, I agree with you, and that's probably the reason why Brad is here several years ago, and we talked about bringing on another project manager, it was for those quality control issues, 'cause, you know, I wasn't here when that happened, but I look back on it, I was like, that can't happen again, so we're definitely with you, it's that mentality.
Yeah, it seems like our back is against the wall, but hopefully not that wall.
Good idea.
Oliver Witt?
Yeah, just my guess, Bob. Do you remember what year we, we built that filtration plant?
I think it was seventeen years old, so two thousand three or two thousand four.
And it wasn't long after that that it started to crack, so it's been a long time.
Yeah, and I, I don't know the full story, 'cause I wasn't here, but from what I understand, there was a lawsuit, and it paid for like some injection, and, you know, like you said, that, that they drained the basin, and they injected some epoxy into it, but it's still, it's still, right, the integrity was, you know, was not that, 'cause we're seeing that now, seventeen years later.
So in order for this to, uh, do the timing, we're gonna have a special meeting, all right, a special regular meeting next Tuesday, um, so we can vote on this. All right, so before we get into our committees, uh, we'll, um, have lens here, we'll have the formal bond resolution, um, and then we'll go ahead and vote on it, and then we should be good to go. Bob?
Yes, well, then the grant application goes in a week from, or, yeah, a week, two weeks from yesterday.
All right, so in the meantime, if you have any questions, uh, we're just talking about, about that, but we don't need any formal action on that. Um, just before we- Just before we adjourn, I will say, you know, I don't typically interact with, um, I don't typically interact with the public, uh, or public comment, um, but I, I just was totally confused. I, I wanted to look up the resolution that we voted on in the past, and, um, I don't see really any that, that, that we were, um, that was discussed here tonight. I, I see, uh, just supporting, um, the code of conduct policy and, and just asking that everybody advise by that. So, um, I think there was some misunderstanding there, but anyways, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Could I go second, please? Second by Alden Anastasia, all in favor?